Our allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic of Olisha Sands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's the question the doctor asked me.
All right, Darcy, do you want to do the roll call?
Sure, Baker.
Here.
Boone.
Here.
Striden.
Here.
Edgar.
Here.
Hines.
Here.
Mitchell. Sessi.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Ambulance.
Here.
Diane. Police.
Here.
Public nurse.
Could I get a motion to approve the mayor's vote on February 4th, 2025? All in favor of approving the mayor's of the February 4th, 2025 regular council meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and you're seeing what? All right. The next item of business is the street committee report. So I would like you to read the report for what it is you want.
Okay. Here it is. Okay. Street committee, we met Wednesday, February 12th. Um, in attendance was Frank Seaman, Kim Mills, Jason Wacky, myself, Mike Striden, Brett Boone, Mayor Jeff Dionne, and Reverend Henry Kiner. Um, the open meeting at 4:00 PM. There were no items on the agenda and there were no public comments as well. So we were able to adjourn the meeting at 4:00 PM. We have the exception of my fourth.
All right, thank you. And Mike, you're up for the Hoover report.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Of course, we met on Wednesday and you have the street committee. All the people over there that, uh, Science mentioned, so. We started, uh, first item on the agenda was Department of Natural Resources Forest Tree Grant. And the city will receive an Arbor Day grant from the Montana DNRC. An amount of $850 for the required natural being of $60. Uh, no action needed. Second item, Glendale Fire Department hired Brad Saner as a full-time firefighter beginning on February 19th, 2025. Again, that's information only. The next item was, uh, yeah, concept of a contract for paper shedding and hard drive disposal. Mayor Dionne contacted Shred of North Dakota regarding large volume of disposable material at City Hall. This will be planned for in the fiscal year 2026 budget. And will be carried out under the service that is known as a purge. And the cost will depend on the amount of paper and hard drives to be purged. There's also a monthly service the city can subscribe to which would enable the Glendale Police Department to dispose of material at a cost of about $53.75 per month. So the committee recommended the council approval of a contract with Shred, North Dakota, a month by month, excuse me, month by month basis for $53.75, $53.75 for the Glendale Police Department and the container would be located at the Glendale Police Department for their use. The next item, the mayor recommended the creation of a special committee of council members, the pool manager, we hired one, a representative from the Glendale Wet Devils Organization, and possibly our director of operations, John Center. And the committee would examine the costs of operating the swimming pool, the fees for using the pool, and the times, days, and any special considerations for use of the pool by the public. Setting of schedule, in other words. The committee will report their findings to the mayor and the council. Uh, the committee recommends council approval of this special committee. Next item, we had some people on the Hooper community area. Pretty versed on the swimming pool team and policy, so we probably got some good volunteers for that. The next item was the, uh, flag disposal at BNSF Park. Public Works Director Seaman informed the committee that the VFW, represented by Doug Byron, requested permission to burn old US and Montana state flags in an incinerator at the BNSF Park. Mr. Seaman stated that the burning of the flags in such a manner would not be in conflict with any city codes or policies. So the committee recommends council approval of this request. Item six was the Glendale Police Department Step Grant Request. And the Glendale Police Department Chief Mills requested permission to apply for a step grant. I thought it was for $15,500, which is to be used for additional patrol shifts for traffic enforcement. The city has applied for and received these grants for a number of years, probably over a decade, but if not much longer than that. The, um, committee recommends council grant Glendale Police Department permission to apply for the step grant. There's a March 1st deadline for this application. There was no public comment. We adjourned at 4:45. That concludes my report, Mayor.
Okay, did anyone have any questions regarding?
I just have a couple clarifying things. Um, one thing that I'm not sure that everybody at home understands, but we did talk about the record retention schedule. We had to contact the Secretary of State to determine what records we need to keep forever. And in the basement downstairs, we do have a lot of historical records that need to be preserved. So I would have preferred that the newspaper said that the city is looks, is looking at preserving documents, but we are also looking at ones that we can destroy. And those would be landfill tickets and things like that. So I realized, um, on the Facebooks over the weekend, people got pretty upset about the thought that we are destroying records, which we are not. So right now, what the police department is asking to do, and they had to contact the Montana Archives to confirm where to send the forms for the files. So what they're doing right now is scanning the files. We also have our City Hall worker here scanning files. She scans the documents and then she puts the documents back in the box and then they're put back downstairs. So we have had to do a lot of research to determine what we keep, what can be shredded, what we need to back up before we shred. And I just want to assure everyone that the city is not just shredding records. So I just wanted to make sure that that was clear. And then I'm going to need to add a motion to the new business because the Montana Archives says since the city, um, needs to have, make a motion, the mayor and the city council need to make a motion to approve the use of digital files to supersede as the record of authority instead of paper files. Now, this motion would make it possible for all our old files to be uploaded and deemed the original instead of having to maintain so many paper files. So when we get to new business, I will ask to add that motion at the end of the new business. I just didn't want to surprise you guys with any of that. So, all right, so next we will hold down the public comment. I have Carrie Keller, the public comment. If you come close to the owl and state your name and make me wait a second for it to recognize you.
Okay. Carrie Keller. Take one down, pass it around. Okay. Uh, my name is Carrie Keller. I reside at 413 North Mead, which is inside Ward 1. I wanted to ask a question regarding a concern I have over some information I have been told recently and hoping for the city to be transparent about it. I know I am on a time crunch and that is why I'll be sending an email, and I also made prints, regarding this meeting to you, Mayor Dionne, in hopes you can answer it in its entirety. I would also like the email to be placed in minutes of this meeting instead of it just saying Carrie Keller comment. Um, any answers to the questions I ask, respectfully answer at the end of my three minutes. I recently was told that Joanne Hines is no longer living in her primary residence, uh, house in Ward 1. I was told now she lives in Ward 2. I was able to confirm that by looking up her address online, which shows she is now living at 611 East Ramens Street. And other members of the community confirmed she has moved to that residence. I believe this violates Montana Code annotated 7-4-4-111. Joanne, is this correct that you have moved? Understandably, due to the unfortunate circumstances that you have now moved out of Ward 1, as in your own residence in Ward 1, however, you now physically live in Ward 2. And that you understand this is a violation of MCA covering determinations of vacancy in most municipal, I can never say this word, municipal office, especially when I'm speed talking. My question to the council and the mayor, what is the solution for this circumstance that is not covered by any exemptions under the Montana law? I make copies because...
Well, there are, um, exceptions and, um, I would ask our attorney to speak to it because when you move out of a ward due to extenuating circumstances and you are actively seeking to be back into your ward, then there is an exception given. So if you have questions about it, I would, um, ask Mr. Rubus to clarify, but that was what I was being told that there is an exemption to it.
That's, that's great. So, um, and then my second thing, which was the second comment, it's just really quick because you addressed a lot of it on the shredding, is that I know from working in that type of field is that you have to apply to the historical archives. Um, federal case files are 100 years, murder files are 50 years. Uh, most other cases are five years, employee files are 20 years, like there's a... Yeah, there's a lot into it and, um, I wasn't really, I'm not really on Facebook much anymore. I'm too busy, way too busy. Um, that I, I've just heard scuttlebutt around town that, um, they were saying that they, they're pretty much going off the article on how poorly it was written about how, um, things were going to get shredded. And you have historians in town that are losing their bajinies over it and everything else. So, uh, yeah, and people stop at me all the time and they're like, I can't believe they want to throw away 100-year-old files. And I'm like, they, they can't, like, calm down. Which I completely agree with, oh, sorry, um, uploading everything digitally makes so much more sense. Like, I am, I am not a paper person, so I completely get it. You all right? I should have been like, ooh. All right, y'all. I know you're gonna, that's why I was like, I'll just speed talk because I don't know if she was gonna reset the timer or not. So, all right, thank you, y'all.
All right, so can we carry this back?
Joyce?
So it does something different?
I bet it's good. It's fancy.
All right, so one thing is, could I get a motion to approve applying for the DNRC Forest Tree Grant with an $850? Okay, Joanne, and second, so all in favor? Okay, so is this the Arbor Grant that we, we should get? Yeah, this is obviously matching. They always ask for it. So this year, Frank, what? No, it just depends on the cost of the trees. Last year, we got the, you know, the cloud out there and the memory of Brett Skinner. And then they, someone yanked the tree out in front of the oasis, so she went and put a lilac in there. And so we got two trees and we still have about $300. So I'm hopeful that we talked about this, that little pile of park.
We're going to be doing some upgrading of Douglas this summer. And that's in our master plan to extend that little park over to the bus stop and put maybe a couple trees there. So I did contact the Department of Transportation because I wasn't sure if we had to have a traffic study or an abandonment study or whatever. So I did get direction on that and so I, we're going to be able to move forward with that this summer. And that's where a couple of the trees are going with. Some, some of the trees are, are more expensive and, and some are pretty reasonable, so. Yeah, so that's our little plan anyway.
Mayor, thank you. Thank you. There was a comment at the committee meeting about the 850 could be in time to...
Right, it can also be our labor and things like that, so. But I know that we want to try to get people out for this and so we were going to try to spend a little bit of money and have maybe a little bit of food and get people to come out and actually help find them instead of just watch us do it, so, yeah. Any other questions? All right, so all in favor of applying for a DNRC Forest Tree Grant, say aye.
Aye.
The next item of new business is, uh, Mike already said we did hire the full-time firefighter. So there's no action on that. The next item will be to approve a month-to-month contract for shredding and disposal with Shred, North Dakota at a cost of $53.75 a month. Could I get a motion to that? Okay, Betsy, in a second.
Well, well.
Okay, Mike, all right, and now we can talk, we discuss it?
I've been trying to catch the motion beforehand and just, uh, we have a motion where this is where the police department.
Oh, sure. I'll say that one will go on.
Okay.
And then, yes. So then my question was, is, um, is this a permanent, a permanent expense for the department? Or can they get the stuff done in a few months and then it goes back? Or what is the plan?
We thought it was going to be three months.
Three months is what we expect, yeah.
And then it will go back, so it's just a three-month business.
And I'm going to take, when I make the motion, I'm going to take the shredding of hard drive disposal off there because that isn't what the police ask for. They're just asking for disposal of the documents. What I would, I had asked for that, but after I contacted them and we talked about a purge, I need to do an inventory, I need to make sure everything's backed up. And we won't be doing the purge, like Mike said, until the next fiscal year. Because once we figure out the fall, then we'll get that. So this motion is just to approve a month-to-month contract with Shred, North Dakota, for the police department at a cost of $53.75. So, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
I'm voting aye. I don't feel like it was presented accurately. Hope that, um, I, I agree with actually the way the article was written because that's how it was presented even to us. I was confused as a member of the city council on how it was going to look, what it was going to be. This should have been gathered first and presented at the same time.
I did, I had it in my...
But we didn't talk about it. Nope, nope. And so I even felt like we were going to, I, I had no idea.
No problem.
And so I get why they are all upset because it wasn't presented the way it should have been, I don't feel. And so that is why I voted no, not because I don't think that this should be done. Um, but I just think that when we're presenting things, we need to make sure that we are presenting all of the facts and not just little pieces of it. You guys deal with this every single day, so you know all of the stuff that's going on behind the scenes. I'm on the city council and I don't know all the things. And so it does look like we are hiding things or that we're not being transparent with the city. You know, even when I'm coming into the council room and I have no idea what's going on. And so I don't feel that the article was written poorly. I think he wrote what was presented in the meeting. And things that you guys deal with on a daily basis didn't even get presented to us. You knew the information, you had it. It just didn't get shared clearly. And so that's the only reason I voted no.
Okay, well, that's a good explanation. Do you have, um, you know, I don't know how to correct this exactly. I'm going to, I'm just going to ask if there, if you have a suggestion for correction because, um, I mean, I did send out the packet, it did have the shred information in, in it from the shred company, um, I did send out the, and I'm not sure that everybody reads their information before the meeting, but maybe I need to be sure to present it in a different way because you don't always have time, like this packet, to read everything in it.
Even just a quick comment that, yes, we're going to be following all the rules. Yes, we gathered all of that information, even if we don't go into detail about it. But I didn't hear that, so he didn't write about it. It wasn't accurate. That, yes, we've done the research on when we can shred things, when it can leave and how, and how it can be preserved. And even just a quick comment, I think, would have kept the Facebookers at bay a little bit and the phone calls at bay. Again, you deal with it every single day, so you know the information, but not everybody else does.
Mayor, can I ask a question?
Oh, sure.
Okay, thank you. And I know this is, we already approved the motion, I just want to ask Chief Mills, we just approved for the police department to engage in the shredding to kind of get things caught up at the police department out there. I mean, you, you have state laws and regulations that govern what can and can't be at the police department. I mean, that's what you'll be following.
Yes.
So, because I, I just voted to do that, so.
We 100% say they've done a ton of research on that. Um, our shredder broke inside dispatch, so we can't, with exception of shredding one or two paper, pieces of paper at a time, we can't shred bulk anymore. And so some of the things that we need to shred is, for example, um, applications from over a decade ago. We kept every application, none of them were hired, but we have all those applications. We, it's 90 days to keep them, so they've been there for well over a decade, if not longer. And they're in boxes and boxes and boxes, and again, we're trying to clean up on four, too.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
And again, I don't think that those things shouldn't be done. I just think that we need to be really, really cognizant of how things are presented to the public. So it's very clear for them who aren't sitting in this room with us every day or aren't at City Hall every day doing the work. That is the only reason I get, I'm standing up.
All right. Are you ready to go?
Yes.
Okay, then we'll move on to the next item is approve a special committee for the swimming pool budget and use. So, okay, Betsy makes a motion, in a second, Dr. Joanne? All right. Now, uh, we can discuss this. Okay, Mike.
Uh, Mayor, what is the plan for, uh, I mean, basically, the mayor would appoint council members to the committee? Uh, that was a question.
Well, I thought maybe people would volunteer.
Okay, yeah.
I mean, but I'll appoint them, they don't. I, I also want to ask, uh, the swim team to be on there, uh, someone from the swim team. When we hired the pool manager, I would like that person to be on the committee. And so I don't want a really huge committee, but I'd say maybe if three council people would volunteer to be on this so that we can look at the cost of the swimming pool. We can look at the cost of what, you know, what we're charging people to use the pool. Because as I said before, I feel that if we can get more people to use it, we might be able to lower the price a little. I certainly don't want to increase any prices for the public because I think people don't use it if they think it's too expensive. And, you know, we're going to build a pool, we're going to put the telephones in, we're going to hire the lifeguards, so we might as well get as many people to use it as we can, so. Yes?
I was just going to say, Mr. Sessi has a really good idea at the committee meeting.
Yes, yes.
I did talk to Frank after that and he, he's already started kind of tracking costs.
He has, and he does have a real good record of it and, and I do too. And then we can also get, um, from Darcy, when she has time, we can also get the revenue that we brought in from the pool. You know, we don't actually have the numbers, but we have the revenue that kind of gives us an idea. And then we need to look at the swim lessons, uh, the cost of those. And if it's possible to do any in the evening, because that was something that was requested of me. Uh, people work and it's hard to, um, get your kid doing swimming lessons, I guess, so. And if there's other discussion, let's please discuss it so there's no, uh, questions about what we're doing with the pool. We have no intent of not opening the pool. I don't want to start any rumors. All we're trying to do is make sure that it's cost-effective for the city and that people can afford to go there. So, this, Mike?
Thanks, Mayor. Is that a question? It may be difficult and it's easy to ask for stuff when you're not the one that's going to have to do it. But, um, is there a way to get five years of information? Because last year, maybe it was too cloudy, this, that, you know, a whole bunch of stuff. So if we get a little bit of a tracking over, you know, I don't know, even three years or something, give us just something, kind of average out high and low of weather. We had different problems, um, some years, uh, we don't need to go back to COVID. Somewhere in between there, kind of. And that might help with some of the decision-making too, because there's some good ideas there. People are always, um, saying, well, you don't have to do it the way you always did, so.
But there are rules that we have to follow with the pool as well and the certain number of lifeguards have to be there or somebody need of the pool, so.
Yes.
Anyway. I don't see anybody jumping off the diving board. Oh, okay, Jason, all right.
As long as we have it at like the same time.
Okay.
Because I work at night, so it can't be late.
All right, sounds good. Okay, and Betsy?
I would, I would, what do you call that? I mean, Joanne has a lot of experiences, uh, the president of the organization over there, I think.
I was for a long time, yes.
Yeah, but if, I know a lot of you guys have busier schedules than somebody I know, so.
I would not mind doing it. Betsy and Jason are going to do it too.
Okay, great, thank you, Joanne.
Best side of the people.
Yeah, there you go.
Better guy.
Kind of volunteer side.
We got a committee for you, Captain.
All right, so then we could vote on, uh, currently Jason, Betsy, and Joanne to be on a special committee for the swimming pool budget use.
I'll make the motion.
Uh, I think we already got a motion. Sorry, we're, now we're voting.
Okay.
I got Betsy and Joanne first, I mean, second, that motion. And now I think adding your names, so that's a little bit of a difference.
And now I think adding your names, so that's a little bit of a difference.
Mr. Curly is just trying to jump into the pool on the end of the bench.
So we all, we're ready to, all in favor of approving the special committee for the swimming pool and budget use, say aye.
Aye.
All right. The next item is to approve the flag disposal at the new park. Can I get a motion? All right, so discussion about this, does everybody understand what this is about? We did talk about it, but there's a little, um, I don't want to say it, it's a, not a pit, but it's a little thing they're constructing out of metal that they will have inside a building at the BN Park, which is now kind of across where the road here used to lead off. So they need it because I think the Boy Scouts are taking care of the flags now, right?
They do a ceremony, yes. Um, but I know they want to take back overdoing this ceremony. And so the way you have to burn flags, it has to be a certain temperature. There's a lot of rule to, to doing that. And so there's a ceremony that you do and you do your ceremonial flag. And then you can put the rest of the flags in an incinerator all at once. And then you don't have to do them one by one. Right now, the Cub Scouts are doing that one by one and it takes forever because they get a lot of flags from around the community. So the Cub Scouts and the Boy Scouts will still be involved in the ceremony and stuff, but it would just be simpler and easier, more efficient and safer, um, to have the incinerator down in Ruta Park. And then again, that is going to be locked up in the shack that you mentioned.
Great. Any other questions or comments about it? All right, and all in flavor, uh, flavor, favor of approving the flag disposal at the NSF Park, say aye.
Aye.
All right, the next item is a motion to approve applying for Glenda Police Department step grant. Michael, I forgot Jason, in a second, I'll do the show. All in favor of approving for applying for the Glenda Police Department step grant, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, here it is. Next, I need to add this motion before I read the ordinances. So I need a motion that, let's see. I need a motion that the city council approves the use of digital files to supersede as the record of authority instead of paper files. Could I get a motion to that?
Hold on, mayor, can I, point of order or something like that? So it seems to me, according to the policy, we had to vote to put it on the agenda first.
Well, we probably should ask if there's an objection. That's my understanding. And you can also vote for it, or we could ask for objections to it. But let's, let's do it the old way and let's, um, vote for a motion to add a motion to the agenda. And the motion is the city council approves the use of digital files to supersede as the record of authority instead of paper files. So could I get a motion to add this item? Okay, thank you, a second. Kevin, all in favor of adding the item to the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Now, we have the item approved and we're moving forward with the city council making a motion to approve the use of digital files to supersede as the record of authority instead of paper files. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Do we need to make a separate motion over it? Cause now we added it to the agenda, so now we need a motion to make this to hold on to the policy.
Yeah, can you write about that?
Cause, cause we just added it to the agenda, so all we've already took.
Okay, we added it to the agenda. Mike and Kevin approved adding it. So we voting to add it, right?
We did.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to, uh.
To approve adding?
No, 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 to use digital files. You had the wording, so if you want to say what the wording is, I will say yes. What is the wording that you want? It came from that one.
It came from the Montana Archives. And it is to have the city council make a motion to approve the use of digital files to supersede as the record of authority instead of paper files.
Yes, I'll make that one.
Okay. Okay, in a second. Okay, Kevin, same people.
All right, mayor.
Now, any questions about it?
Yes.
Yeah.
Um, so obviously, you just passed the, passed the question. So then obviously we follow the rules, have an appropriate legal backup, whether that's the cloud or if it's effective hardware inside. I think more place to talk to. Anyway, I just want to make sure that that, that it's done according to the law.
Any other discussion about it? Okay, then, I'll try this one more time. Uh, all in favor of having the city council approve the use of digital files to supersede as the record of authority instead of paper files, say aye.
Aye.
And you have seen. All right. Now, the next items of business are, are revamped ordinances. We have two ordinances that were recommended by the codifier that, well, that we adopt these ordinances because they're more in-depth and they're more clear than our old ordinances. So bear with me while I read this long ordinance. Okay, ordinance number O two, two, O, two, five. An ordinance amending Title III Business Licenses and Regulations, Chapter Four Solicitors, Section three, four, one through three, four, five. Glenda City Code of the City of Glenda to Chapter one, one, one Peddlers, Itinerant Merchants and Solicitors. Chapter one, one, one Peddlers, Itinerant Merchants and Solicitors. This is section, is definitions, license requirement, applicant, application procedures, standards for issuance, revocation procedures, standards for revocation, appeal procedure, exhibition of identification, city policy on soliciting, notice regulating soliciting, duty of solicitors to ascertain notice and prohibited solicitation. One, one, zero, point, zero, one definition. For the purpose of this chapter, the following definition shall apply unless the context clearly indicates or requires a different meaning. Business, the business carried on by any person who is an itinerant merchant, peddler or solicitor as defined in this section. Goods, merchandise of any description whatsoever and includes, but is not restricted to, wares and foodstuffs. Itinerant merchant, any person whether as owner, agent or consignee who engages in temporary business of selling goods within the city and who in the furtherance of such business uses any building, structure, vehicle or any place within the city. Peddler, any person not an itinerant merchant who travels from place to place by any means, carrying goods for sale or making sales or making deliveries, or number two, without traveling from place to place, sells or offers goods for sale from any public place within the city. Solicitor, any person who travels by means from place to place, taking or attempting to take orders for sale of goods to be delivered in the future or for service to be performed in the future. A person who is a solicitor is not a peddler. One, one, zero, dot, zero, two license requirement. A, any person who is an itinerant merchant, peddler or solicitor shall obtain a license before engaging in such activity in the city. The fee for this license required by this chapter but shall be set from time to time by the Glenda City Council. C, no license issued under this chapter shall be transferable. D, all licenses issued under this chapter shall expire ninety days after the date of issuance thereof. Penalty, see ten, point, nine, nine. One, one, zero, point, zero, three application procedure. A, all applicants for licenses required by this chapter shall file an application with the city treasurer. This application shall be signed by the applicant, if an, if an individual or by all partners, if a partnership, or the president, if a corporation. The applicant may be requested to provide information concerning the following items. A, the name and address of the applicant. Two, A, the name of the individual having management authority or supervision of the applicant's business during the time that it is proposed to be carried on in the city. B, the local address of such individual. C, the permanent address of such individual. D, the capacity in which said individual will act. Number three, the name and address of the person, if any, for whose purpose the business will be carried on and if a corporation, the state of in corporation. Number four, the time period or periods during which it is proposed to carry on an applicant's business. Number five, A, the nature, character and quality of the goods and services to be delivered for sale or delivered. B, if goods, their invoice value, whether they are to be sold by sample as well as from stock. C, if goods, where and by whom such goods are manufactured or grown and where such goods are at the time of application. Six, the nature of the advertising proposed to be done for the business. Seven, whether or not the applicant or the individual identified in Division A, two, A, above, or the person identified in A, three, has been convicted of any crime or misdemeanor and if so, the nature of each offense and the penalty assessed for each offense. The applicants for peddler or solicitor licenses may be required to provide further information concerning the following items in addition to that request under Division A above. Number one, a description of the applicant. Number two, a description of any vehicle proposed to be used in the business, including its registration number, if any. C, all applicants for licenses required by this chapter shall attach to their application, if required by the city, credentials from the person, if any, for which the applicant proposes to, to do business, authorizing the applicant to act as such representative. D, applicants who propose to handle foodstuffs shall also attach to their application in addition to any attachments required under Division C. A statement from a licensed physician dated not more than ten days prior to the date of the application certifying the applicant to be free of contagious or communicable disease. Penalty, see ten, point, nine, nine. One, one, zero, point, O, four, standards for issuance. A, upon receipt of an application, an investigation of the applicant's business reputation and moral character shall be made. The application shall be approved unless such investigation discloses tangible evidence that the conduct of the applicant's business would pose a substantial threat to the public health, safety, morals or general welfare. In particular, tangible evidence that the applicant won has been convicted of a crime of mor- moral turpitude or, number two, has made willful misstatements on the application or, number three, has committed prior violations of ordinances pertaining to itinerant merchants, peddlers, solicitors and the like. Or, number four, has committed prior fraudulent acts or, number five, has a record of continual breaches of solicited contracts will constitute valid reasons for disapproval of an application. One, one, zero, point, zero, five, revocation procedure. Any license or permit granted under this chapter may be revoked by the city treasurer after notice and hearing pursuant to the standards of one, one, zero, point, zero, six. Notice of the hearing for revocation shall be given in writing setting forth specifically the grounds of the complaint and the time and place for the hearing. Such notices shall be mailed to the licensees at the last known address at least ten days prior to the date set for the hearing. One, one, zero, point, O, six, standards for revocation. A license granted under this chapter may be revoked for any of the following reasons. A, any fraud or misrepresentation contained in the license application or, number two, any fraud, misrepresentation or false statement made in connection with the business being conducted under the license or, C, any violation of this chapter or, D, conviction of the license of any felon, of the licensee of any felony or conviction of the licensee of any misdemeanor involving moral turpitude or E, conducting the business license in an unlawful manner in such a way as to constitute a menace to the health, safety, morals or general welfare of the public. One, one, zero, point, zero, seven, appeal procedure. Any person agreed by a decision under, I have that wrong, one, one, O, O, four, or one, one, O, O, six, shall have the right to appeal to the Glenda City Council. The appeals shall be taken by filing with the city council within fourteen days after notice of the decision has been mailed to such person's last known address, a written statement setting forth the ground for appeal. Glenda City Council shall set the time and place for a hearing and a notice of such hearing shall be given to such person in the same manner as provided in one, one, zero, point, zero, five. B, the order of the city council after the hearing shall be filed. One, one, zero, point, zero, eight, exhibition of identification. A, any license issued to an itinerant merchant under this chapter shall be posted conspicuously in or at the place named therein. In the event, more than one place within the town shall be used to conduct the business license. Separate licenses shall be issued for each place. B, the city treasurer shall issue a license to each peddler or solicitor licensed under this chapter. The license shall contain the words licensed peddler or licensed solicitor, the expiration date of the license and the number on the license. The license shall be kept with the licensee during the time they are engaged in the business license. Penalty, see ten, point, nine, nine. One, one, zero, point, zero, nine, city policy on soliciting. It is hereby declared to be the policy of the city that the occupants of the residence shall make the determination of whether solicitors shall be or shall not be invited into their respective residence. One, one, zero, point, one, zero, notice regulating soliciting. A, notice of the refusal of invitation to solicitors to any residence shall be given on a weatherproof card approximately three by four inches in size exhibited upon or near the main entrance door to the residence, indicating the determination by the occupant containing the applicable words as follows. No solicitors invited. B, the letters shall be at least one third of inch in height for the purpose of uniformity that cards shall be provided by the people's police to persons requesting at the cost thereof. C, the card so exhibited shall constitute sufficient notice to any solicitor of the determination by the occupant of the residence of the inform, information contained thereon. One, one, zero, dot, one, one, duty of solicitors to ascertain notice. A, it shall be the duty of every solicitor upon going into any premises in the city accounted to residents located to first examine the notice provided for in one, one, zero, point, one. If any is attached and will be governed by the statement contained on the notice. If the notice states no solicitors invited, then the solicitor, whether registered or not, shall immediately and peacefully depart from the premises. B, any solicitor who has gained entrance to any residence, whether invited or not, shall immediately and peacefully depart from the premises when requested to do so by the occupant. Penalties, see ten, point, nine, nine. One, one, zero, point, one, two, prohibited solicitation. It is hereby declared to be unlawful and shall constitute a nuisance for any person to go upon anthroses, answering the doorbell upon or near any door or create a sound in any manner calculated to attract the attention of the occupant of such residence for the purpose of securing an audience with the occupant thereof and engaging soliciting in the eye. and engaged soliciting in defiance of the notice exhibited at the residence in accordance with the provisions of one-one-zero-point-zero. The penalty, see ten-point-nine-nine. So if you were reading along, I, there was two spots in here where I had a zero instead of a one. So I made those corrections, so, uh, I guess I.
What was the field procedure, one, ten?
Yeah. And I, so I have those written in blue, I can make that correction. So I believe that we can pass, um, we can make a motion to pass this with the corrections for the first reading. All in favor of, of approving, I'll check about the, the ordinance. Ordinance number zero-two-dash-two-zero-two-five. Wait, we gotta do the, I'm sorry, I almost missed that one. Anyway, we have to do a roll call, vote for all ordinances, I can't do that. So we have to call the roll. Baker?
Aye.
Coon?
Aye.
Graydon?
Aye.
Cedric?
Aye.
Heinz?
Sassy?
Aye.
Thompson? Number seven, four, two, eight. Alright, we have one, another ordinance now. It's not quite as long as the last one. This is ordinance number zero-three-two-zero-twenty-five. It's an ordinance amending Title V through regulations, Chapter four minus seventy-five, four-one of the Glenda City Codes concealed in the curfew. So at the beginning of this, you will see that it says Chapter XX dot XX and that is because the codifiers do not yet have the number for this as they're changing the number. So it will be replaced in Section five-four-one. So definitions, for the purpose of this section, the following definitions shall apply unless the context clearly indicates or requires a different meaning. One, curfew hours. A, eleven P M on any Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday or Thursday until six A M on the following day. And B, twelve-oh-one A M until six A M on any Saturday or Sunday. Emergency, an unforeseen combination of circumstances of the resulting state that calls for immediate action. The term includes but is not limited to a fire, natural disaster, automobile accident or any situation requiring immediate action to prevent serious bodily injury or loss of life. Number three, establishment. Any privately owned place of business operated for a profit to which the public is invited, including but not limited to any place of amusement or entertainment. Four, guardian. A, a person who under court order is the guardian of the, the person of a minor or B, a public or private agency with whom a minor has been placed by a court. Number five, minor, any person under eighteen years of age. Number six, operator, any individual, firm, association, partnership or corporation operating, managing or conducting any establishment. The term includes the members or partners of an association or partnership and the officers of a corporation. Number seven, parent. A person who is A, a natural parent, adopted parent or step person or a stepparent or another person or B, at least eighteen years of age and authorized by a parent or guardian to have the care and custody of a minor. Number eight, public place. Any place to which the public or substantial group of the public has access and includes but not limited to streets, highways and the common areas of schools, hospitals, carpent houses, office buildings, transport facilities and shops. Number nine, remain. A, linger or stay. B, fail to leave premises when requested to do so by a police officer or the owner, operator or other person in control of the premises. Number ten, serious bodily injury. Bodily injury that creates a substantial risk of death or that causes death, serious permanent misfigurement or protracted loss or impairment of the function of any bodily member or organ. B, offenses. Number one, a minor commits an offense if they remain in any public place or on the premises of any establishment within the city during curfew hours. Number two, a parent or guardian of a minor commits offense if he knowingly permits or by insufficient control allows the minor to remain in any public place or on the premises of any establishment within the city during curfew hours. Number three, the owner, operator or any employee of an establishment commits an offense if they knowingly allow a minor to remain upon the premises of the establishment during curfew hours. Number C, exemptions. Number one, it is an exemption to Division B that the minor was A, accompanied by the minor's parent or guardian. B, on an errand at the direction of the minor's parent or guardian without any detour or stop. Number C, in a motor vehicle involved in interstate travel. Number D, engaged in, in employment activity or going to or returning home from an employment activity without any detour or stop. E, involved in an emergency. F, on the sidewalk abutting the minor's resident or abutting the residence of a next door neighbor if the neighbor did not complain to the police department about the minor's presence. G, attending a school function, religious or other recreational activities supervised by adults and sponsored by the city, a civic organization or similar entity that takes responsibility for the minor or going to or returning home from without any detour or stop unofficial school, religious or other recreational activities supervised by adults and sponsored by the city, a civic organization or other similar entity that takes responsibility for the minor. This is the one I think we wanted to leave off on. This is H, exercising First Amendment rights protected by the United States Constitution such as free exercise of religion, freedom of speech and the right of assembly or I, married and had been married or had disabilities of minor removed in accordance with state law. Number two, it is a defense to prosecution under Division B three that the owner, operator or employee of an establishment promptly notify the police department that a minor was present upon the premises of the establishment during curfew hours and refused to leave. D, enforcement. Before taking any enforcement action under this section, a police officer shall, as the apparent of, shall, as the apparent offender's agent, the reason for being in a public place. I think, I missed ask, shall ask. I'm sorry, I said leave myself. I don't know if that's very. The officer shall not issue a citation or make an arrest under this section unless the officer reasonably believes that an offense has occurred and that based on any response and other circumstances, including investigation additional to the actions required in this Division B as a reasonable question would be necessary, no exemption in contingency is present. Alright, I mean, first I did a motion for, to approve ordinance number three-twenty-dash-twenty-five. Okay, that's it, and Kevin, looks like you seconded it. Alright, any discussion about this?
Uh, there, I just had a couple, not really a discussion worthy probably, but, uh, just so you know, under B offenses, subsection one, I think if a minor commits an offense.
Yes, it is.
I, you know, I just want you to know, so when you go to your homework, you got this and then you found that other one. Under exemptions, I. Married or had been married or had disabilities of, I don't know, what is it?
Well, it's that you're a minor.